Meeting of the Oshkosh Municipal Council. The city clerk could please take the role?
Esslinger?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Stevenson is absent, excused. Builo?
Here.
Hayes?
Present.
Mugawar?
Here.
Six present.
Leading us in the invocation this evening will be councilmember Esslinger.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
This evening, we have students from Trinity Lutheran School here to help us with the pledge. We have Elena Keack and Selena Kramlich.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, as I mentioned, we have Elena and Selena here from Trinity Lutheran. As I mentioned, if you wouldn't mind letting us know, maybe, well, tell the folks at home at least which one you are here, and then tell them your favorite class, maybe, if you want to give a shout out to a teacher or to your class. Here you go.
I'm Selena, and my favorite subject is science.
I'm Elena, and my favorite subject is English.
Well, thank you, ladies, for coming here this evening to use the pledge. I really appreciate it. Do you hear me?
We'll do a shout out to Mr. Reynolds.
There we go. Excellent. Well, thank you again. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Yeah, promise you 6:03 in it. All right, moving right along. Assistant statements to council. I have no one registered for assistant statements this evening. Thank you again for coming. Moving right along, we'll go to consent agenda. We'll take a motion and a second on consent.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'll take the role on full consent agenda.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Here at six.
Next up, we have a few pending ordinances. Ordinance 24-71, amend section 27A-11 of the municipal code pertaining to parking regulations on designated streets and alleys. Congress Avenue Transportation Committee recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please take the role on 24-71.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect time.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Here at six.
Ordinance 24-72, this is to amend section 27A-11 of municipal code pertaining to parking regulations on designated streets and alleys. Panooka Street Transportation Committee recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on 24-72? Please take the role.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Here at six.
Moving right along, ordinance 24-73, this is to amend section 27A-2 of the municipal code pertaining to prohibited right turns at the intersections of North Main Street, Harrison Street, and New York Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval.
Move it. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, take the role on 24-73.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Here at six.
Now, we're on to new ordinances. No anticipated action is expected this evening on these, it looks like, five new ordinances. First up, ordinance 24-74, this is to rename, recodify, and amend the following chapters and provisions of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code. Chapter three, currently advertising to finance. Chapter five, currently amusements to special events. Chapter eight, currently in general to permits and licenses. Chapter 12, currently finance to property and purchasing. Section 17-12, currently advertisements on private property without owner's consent prohibited to notices, advertisements, and bill posting. And move the provisions in the current chapter 18 to new chapter eight and repeal chapter 18 currently licenses. I see no one, no one's registered to speak on that. Moving right along, ordinance 24-75, first reading, amend definition of overtime parking and basic penalties of, for violation of parking provisions. Ordinance 24-76, this is to amend section 27-36 and appendix 27B regarding designation of parking spaces in downtown municipal parking lots, and the Transportation Committee recommends approval. Ordinance 24-77, approve changes to chapter three of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code to create a vehicle registration fee. We do have a member of the audience here registered to speak, Mr. Fitzgerald. If you'd like to come on up, right on over here. Good evening, welcome.
Sean Fitzgerald, 517 Gero Court in Oshkosh. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. I know this has been an issue going on for some time. I was on the council 10 years ago, and this was an issue that came up then. It's come up several times since and will continue to come up. I know, sitting in the seat of the council members, one of the most emotional things that you have, and at least that I had when I sat in the council, is hearing the stories of families who receive these large assessments and the financial burden that's associated with it. It's certainly emotional every single time. Can't help but feel compassion for the people and those stories. This is unfortunate, we've gone down this path for 15 to 20 years now of paying for our improvements to our community's infrastructure through these special assessments. And thousands of homeowners have put forth that money. There was that same emotion each year that their assessment came up, that their bill came due. Some people have known a year in advance, and that continues to be the case today. But I encourage you to stay the course on funding our improvements, going down the continuing, the path that we have of having these assessments. I know it's painful for that year when the assessment comes up, but, you know, people that have paid already aren't necessarily defending this new strategy toward funding the improvements in the community. And people whose bill is coming due five years out, 10 years out, aren't concerned about these assessments until it gets to be their year to pay it. This new strategy is, unfortunately, it's unfair to those people who've made those investments. And, you know, I can say, there is a value, there is an improved value to your home when you go to sell it, if you have improvements to your street and sanitary and sewer and water in front of it. There's ways that you can recoup your money on the sale of your home after you've paid for these assessments. Those people that haven't done so yet, savvy home buyer will recognize that if their bill's going to be coming due down the road, it's gonna, it's gonna cost more to them, and they can negotiate that in the price of their house. So I hope you give some consideration that, to the fact that thousands of people have paid this already. It's important that you stay the course. This is an issue that's going to come up in subsequent councils after you're gone. And I'm just here to remind you that it's important to recognize those people that have already paid.
Thank you.
Mayor, we also have another person that would like to speak on this topic, I believe, Rob Kleiman. The kiosks were not on.
No problem at all, Mr. Kleiman, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. That's Rob Kleiman, 120 Jackson Street, representing the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce here tonight. I just wanted to provide some feedback from us, from a chamber perspective. We conducted a survey on this issue over the past two weeks with our membership, and the results were interesting. One thing that was abundantly clear is that infrastructure improvement's important to our membership, to business. And the general consensus really is that Oshkosh needs to fix more streets faster. So that was, you know, that was definitely a resounding comment that we received in the comments section repeated times. So, you know, we had a mixed bag of comments on kind of your proposal, the existing situation, and maybe some combination of some other things, but just the results, 26 of 98, or 26% favored the proposal that's in front of you today for the VRF and utility increase. And we had 32 of 98, or 33%, said just leave it the same, kind of for those reasons Sean mentioned, but 40 of 98, we threw an extra option out there for them to consider, and 40 of 98, or 41%, basically said, just utilize the general levy, spread it out over the entire property tax base, make street sidewalk improvements, utilizing the general levy. This, they said, use an advisory referendum, put it to the city residents. And quite honestly, the majority of that responded were in favor of that approach. So we wanted to pass that along, you know, what it gets down to, 74% of our respondents weren't in favor of the proposed approach. So it's not an easy solution. We understand that, it's very dynamic, but wanted to make you aware of those results from the business community's perspective, at least the chamber membership perspective. You know, I think the general comments were that, based on the comments that we want to fix more roads faster, that they thought this approach was a Band-Aid approach, because you're really raising the money to fix two to three miles of road a year. There's over 300 miles of streets in Oshkosh, you know, your odds of having a street, you know, improvement is once every 40 or 50 years, based on those numbers. So comments were that this really doesn't tackle and address the real problem of getting more streets done faster, this current approach. So, you know, you'd say, well, what are some ideas? I mean, one idea was a combination of all three approaches, potentially using a smaller VRF with maybe a smaller utility increase, understanding that, coupled with retaining some type of assessment, you know, skin in the game, those who pay benefit, those who benefit pay, I mean, maybe with a cap or some type of smaller assessment, and then combine that with the general levy increase to come up with the money needed to fix more roads. So that was interesting. Not saying that should be the way it should go, but that was an interesting approach, and it really kind of covered a lot of those concerns that people had by going that direction. So, you know, I think that's really it. I mean, we commend you for tackling the issue. It's not an easy issue. The bottom line is, the consensus was, we want more roads fixed faster, but what we really would recommend is that maybe you take a step back right now, you know, not move forward with this approach, and come up with something that more people and businesses can get behind from the get-go, and we're willing to offer our help and support in that process along the way. So just wanted to pass that along. If there's any questions, happy to answer them. All right?
Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have first reading of ordinance 24-78. This is to approve zone change from urban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay to institutional district for the property located at 240 Algoma Boulevard. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Oh, no more, no action.
Oh, sorry.
On to new resolutions. Resolution 24-79, appropriate ARPA, yeah, appropriate ARPA funds for 2024 projects in lieu of issuing debt. Take a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I just want to point out two things in this resolution. One, it's doing exactly what we set out to do, what, three years ago, when we approved this policy, is we're using ARPA funds to pay for CIP scored projects, infrastructure projects, otherwise would have been funded with debt. And that was the logic of our policy, and I'm pleased to see it working. I also want to point out, in the staff memo, I was pleased to see that the memo states there will be no planned issuance of stormwater bonds this year because we're going to use our fund balance. I know that's something that we had directed you a year and a half ago, and had mentioned as a possibility, so very happy to see that. Nice work.
Any other comments? Finance Director Van Gompel?
Yes, members of the council, when I prepared the memo, I addressed about $915,000 of basically vehicles and small equipment. After the memo was prepared and distributed at council, had some internal discussions. There is a parks shop sweeper for $85,000 on that list. As in working with Parks Director Maurer, that $85,000, we still actually have some unspent borrowed funds for the building of the new Parks Administration Building, and he believes he has sufficient funds to cover that. So even though the $85,000's included in that, if you wanted to take a motion to strike it, that would be great, but the intent now is not to use ARPA funds or new debt issuance for the $85,000 on that. It's a mechanical sweeper for the shop area. So if you want to strike that from the list, you can, but it was, the memo was already out, and I didn't have a chance to correct it.
Sounds good. Anything, before we make that motion, anything else you want to share on, for those listening at home, balance or intended expectations for when you're coming forward with, to spend the rest of it?
Yeah, so we have brought forward a number of resolutions to council as part of the budget process. This one's in anticipation of coming forward with other debt issuance. After the $915,000, and if you add back, or subtract $85,000, we're looking at just under $900,000 of remaining ARPA funds. My advice to the city manager is that we come back to council sometime this spring, probably in the April timeframe. I know that the city manager's also working with the community on applications for the non-infrastructure ARPA projects. I think he's got some work sessions scheduled this week. So council will have to make a determination on that 25% non-infrastructure portion, and then about $900,000 of remaining funds. And we have talked to the department heads about what that might look like. We've gotten some ideas that are like outside of our CIP process, but we're still kind of working through what makes the best sense. ARPA funds have to be committed by the end of 2024, so the timeline is ticking towards its completion, so we need to just appropriate those funds. In addition, I'm also working with the departments to look at what was appropriated and what has been spent. You know, whenever we appropriate funds, sometimes we come in under, sometimes a couple, a little bit over, but we'll work with the department heads on that remaining funds and get that to you early this spring.
One, just one more question, I think, before maybe councilmember Ford's going to make that motion. One of the reasons for, or one of the potentials for using some of the funds was the water filtration project on Lake Winnebago. Do you know where we're at in terms of timeline for coming, with information coming back in the state regarding the cost structure of that? And I'm dragging this out because I see Mr. Robbie's walking up here.
Yeah, we've had, we've had some discussions regarding that. The difficulty is trying to get those commitments done before our ARPA timeline runs out. So while we've had some internal discussions about that, and I know that we're working on the timeline and the exact spend down that's necessary for those improvements, I don't think we can meet our ARPA responsibility by the end of 2024 to get those money spent. And I would defer to Public Works Director, Robbie.
Yeah, that was one of the things, we had a meeting, finance staff and several of my staff, with elders as well, and our consultant had put together some estimates on the timeframe. And I think with the amount of design work we have left to do and the coordination from the landscape architect work, some of that unfortunately took a back burner to getting the intake situation resolved. So we kind of weren't working on some of the Clearwell stuff while we were dealing with that emergency with the intake. So we're getting that stuff picked back up, but I think, as Mr. Van Gompel indicated, it's likely going to be very difficult for us to meet the timeline to appropriate that money at this year.
Sure. I appreciate the info.
Since you're up here, can you give an update on the intake project? And can we use ARPA towards any of that? Like, how's that going?
The flushing of the intake is complete. That work has all been completed very successfully. You know, as far as the money, I know we had some funding in the CIP already for work on the intakes, as far as if we wanted to use ARPA for it, I guess I would, you know, defer to others for that.
Mr. Robbie saw me move my microphone, so I think our focus has been on reducing general obligation borrowing as opposed to borrowing for the utilities. You know, I guess from some folk's standpoint, that is pretty much one in the same, but our focus has been on general obligation, and that was, we had funds set aside for this project in the first place.
All right, I'll take a motion to strike the sweeper.
Yeah, I'll move to take the $85,000 park shop sweeper off the 2024 ARPA project list.
Second.
Any discussion? Take the role on the motion to amend.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Here at six.
All right. Any other discussion on the amended motion? If not, please take the role on 24-79 as amended.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Here at six. Did I miss Ford?
No.
Okay. Five, six. Thank you.
We can have him say it again if we need to here. All right, that concludes the action items for this evening. Moving on to council discussion, direction to city manager, future agenda items. First up, under council discussion, or the only one under council discussion, direction to staff, this is a follow-up from our last council meeting regarding mayor versus council president for the City of Oshkosh. I didn't have a memo in the packet. This was a follow-up, hoping that my colleagues have had time to digest the topic a bit more. There's obviously, there's been some, I appreciate the news coverage, the local coverage, even at the high school level, it's my understanding there might have been, or is going to be an article even there, just talking about it. That's awesome. It's good that people are talking, asking questions and having dialogue and doing it civically, so that's a good thing. Lots of emails, phone calls, obviously we had, you know, we've got people that come to us, we've gotten emails from former council members on their thoughts. Obviously, it's unique. We're a small, small group, a small alumni group up here that, you know, only a few, a few people a year get to come do this over the course of, you know, Oshkosh's history. So hearing them and hearing their thoughts, I don't know if there's questions you guys have, or information you'd like to have, or any discussion you want to have, so that's why this is here, and I'll leave it at that for now, I guess. Don't all jump at once. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, you know, I like this stuff. I think it's worth pointing out, I know there's been some discussion about, you know, what the mayor actually does, and we don't have to speculate, it's in our ordinance. Our mayor is responsible for presiding at meetings, announcing the quorum, receiving motions, supervising the voting of this body, enforcing rules of order, making proclamations, and making appointments subject to board approval. And they're not the executive officer, that's the city manager. And so that list of duties I shared with you that are the Oshkosh mayor and every other chapter 64 city, that's the same thing that a council president does. So we're operating with a council president, we just call it a mayor, and we elect it directly.
Couple additional points, I guess, I want to make. I appreciate, thank you, councilmember Ford, for doing that. Couple additional points, you know, through the discussion within the community on this topic, I'm not surprised by the number of people who don't understand our form. They don't understand this. And when you, when you take a few moments to just explain, you know, that the mayor of Oshkosh is the only one in the state of Wisconsin that has the title of mayor, yet no executive authority, no executive function, the reaction is, oh, well, why is that? Why are we, you know, why are we doing that? That doesn't make any sense. You're right, it doesn't make any sense at all. That's the reason for bringing this forward, because it just, it doesn't make sense at this point in time. In the past, I don't, I don't really want to dwell on the past, and we can read about, you know, the past votes and things like that. I think there was different reasons at different times for different things. Here we are in 2024, and trying to set this community up, this body up for success in the future, I see this as being a good thing to help us do that. One of the interesting things I want to point out is when we have a mayor who goes up for election, so even myself, for an example, in 2023, and it's happened more frequently than not, that that person gets elected, they're in the middle of their existing council term. And so then this council, or, you know, previous councils have then taken up the, the topic of replacing them. It's the most awkward hiring process possible. Councilmember Hayes went through it, councilmember Erickson and councilmember Ford have gone through it. I don't think anybody...
I did.
Did you? And while this body has tried to do its best over time, what doesn't get talked about is that every time we've done that, we've actually taken the ability from the voters to decide who sits up here. If we go to a council president, the voters decide what seven people always sit up here. Always. Anytime in the past, myself, the previous mayor, mayors in the past, we've gone through a selection process where it's a beauty pageant. It's a, it can be, it's an ugly process at times, it's awkward. I don't mind that stuff, but it's that we took that ability away from the 66,000-plus people that call Oshkosh home. We took that ability away from them. It's their job to decide who sits up here. So I want to point that out, that we've done that, and that's not, I think if we're about representing the people, they're the ones who should be deciding who sits up here. So as we go forward, that's one of those things that can be corrected by moving to this type of operating system. So, any councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. That street goes both ways. Essentially, under the form of government that we have here now, we've taken that power away from the citizens by electing seven council members that watch over a city manager. So the citizens of Oshkosh really don't elect the person that runs the city. I think that's wrong. So if you can argue that way, I argue the other way. But as I stated at a previous council, what we have here is something that was voted on by the citizens. This is what they wanted, this is what was voted on, and so, again, I have no problem taking, doing a referendum on whatever, the city manager, mayor, leave it the way it is. It doesn't, doesn't matter to me. It's just something that I think that if we're going to look at changing or keeping, that's something that citizens would have to undertake themselves. That's what, that's what we did in the past, and I don't think any one of seven council members should feel the need to take something away from the voters of what they voted in
Any other thoughts or comments on the topic? I need to, go ahead, councilmember Builo.
I've been working on trying to figure out how I want to say stuff, and I think in general, I would favor more education about what the role of mayor is versus, I mean, it's semantics, like whether you call it council president or not, but with your role as mayor, 7,737 people voted for you to be the person who runs the meetings, appoints to boards. And I think there is value in that as well, you know, I get where you're coming from, I get the switch to the council president, and I understand that we are unique. But I also think that with the current system, the voters have a say in who sits in your seat and who does that. And if there's misunderstanding about your role versus Mark's role, let's clarify that versus changing the words, is my opinion.
And I want it to be known, you know, I respect councilmember Esslinger's position on it, as well as, there was no period in that statement, there may have been an awkward pause, but as well as councilmember Builo's on this as well. And I, and it's not meant to be a smarty pants, but just because someone can win an election does not make them an effective leader. This body choosing its most competent and capable person to walk them through, you know... know, at times difficult and or delicate decisions, I think that's important. Just because you can win an election doesn't mean, you know, that you can lead, lead others effectively. Now, any one of you can say that about me right now and I open myself up to that. That's fine. I'm, I'm comfortable in that, but this body choosing its own leader, I think that's the most effective way for us to continue to be an effective governing body, in my opinion. So, and I'm only one of seven. That's, and, and I respect your guys' opinion on that, too. I have a clarifying question for, for probably city attorney. I apologize, I didn't pose it to you early, but you're going to know the answer. Generally with, with ordinance, because this is, would require an ordinance update from us, it's that, how many council members need to give direction to, to move, you know, to have something written up? I remember, you know, resolutions are pretty, pretty easy and generally pretty light, but ordinances wise, we've talked about this in the past of how many council members need to give direction to achieve that.
Yeah, generally, majority consensus.
Okay. So it is, yep. For, okay. All right.
Is that a, is that a written rule or is it just something we've just come up with?
Well, the ultimately, any ordinance that is done, we need the consensus of the council so that we know we can prepare an ordinance regardless of the nature of that ordinance. So we've done them the last couple of meetings where we've had that. So it's up to council to, to give us the consensus. That doesn't commit a council member to vote for or against that specific ordinance. That just gives us general direction that we should put staff resources into that. It's to prevent seven one-offs, that each one of you says, I'm on an ordinance written for this, and then we go through a great deal of effort to do that. Resolutions are pretty easy because they don't have the force of law. But an ordinance, because it has the force of law, we want to make sure before we commit staff resources to it, that we get consensus, that council thinks it's worth looking at. But again, it doesn't commit any of you to.
As Mark said, it doesn't commit you to vote for it, but if you can't even get Ford to say, work on it, generally, that means.
But again, I mean, is that, can you show me that statute, verse, chapter, whatever?
It's council, council's consensus.
That's how we.
Is that in our, is that in our rules that we adopt on a, at our reorganization meeting?
No, there's no formal rule on it.
Okay. Well, then, I mean, all seven of us get elected. I would say if the mayor wants to do this on his own, he has the authority to do that. He's one of seven that gets elected. He has the power to do that. If he wants to do that, I don't think he needs my opinion to do that.
When you say to do that, what do you?
To, to meet with the city attorney and, I don't know, maybe the city manager and say, I want to craft this ordinance change, here's what I want to do, please, you know what I want to do now, do it legally. I think he should be able to do that by himself.
Then individual council members are directing staff.
Yep.
Yeah, but then it comes to the council.
That is, in my opinion, is a waste of staff time. And that's why I brought this, I brought any item forward on ordinances, I bring them forward to get some consensus of council so that we don't spend an inordinate amount of staff time on something that doesn't even have a general scheduling on the agenda. Any council member can schedule, can ask, I'd like to put on the next agenda, just like the mayor did in this case, I'd like to put on the next agenda this item. There was no, I didn't need consensus for that request. Any council member can ask an item for discussion, go on. But for an ordinance to require a significant amount of staff time in that, and typically that significant amount of staff time typically involves the attorney's office, but depending on the ordinance may also involve operating departments. It's, it's putting a significant amount of staff time towards something that doesn't even have a general consensus that council would see it worthwhile to spend that significant amount of staff time on something like that.
No, and I respect that. I have the, the entire time I've, I've sat up here, we've had different topics that have come up that we've given direction to move forward on and then still have, you know, we voted it down even when it's come here. But I appreciate the clarification on that. Deputy Mayor Erickson, mic's yours.
For what it's worth, I think, given the discussion that's been happening both up here and out in the community, I'm supportive of seeing it move forward.
Well, given that Councilmember Stevenson isn't here tonight, I'm going to hold off on, on asking that of you guys yet. Allow him to have his opportunity to weigh in. We're in no rush. There's, there's nothing too pressing that, that would require, you know, any sense of urgency on it. So, so know that you'll see that again in the future. Appreciate the few minutes on it. Thank you. Future workshop, strategic planning session, this is for all of council as well as department heads, March 4th, 2024, 8:00 AM, 4:30 PM, Lake Shore Parks Four Seasons Building.
Just, we'll probably have breakfast served a little bit earlier than that so you can get hitting it, hitting it running at 8:00 AM.
And then lunch is included, too?
Yep. And it will be a very full day, I assure you of that.
Yep. We generally run right up on a full eight hours for these sessions, so. Councilmember Announcements and Statements. Councilmember Ford.
This is a really important one.
Uh-oh.
Go see Matilda at Oshkosh North. 7:00 PM starts Thursday night.
We have a play.
Yes. There's a kid in there that's tortured by chocolate cake and he looks like me, so be ready.
That's great. I also wanted to lob the city clerk a bit of a softball here. We have early voting currently happening. City of Oshkosh has a new site. We don't do it at city hall. This is new for us in 2024. Corner of Irving and.
Jefferson.
Jefferson. Taking away on what kind of hours are left for this week and then what turnout's been like.
This is the last week of early absentee voting, so if you're not going to be in town on February 20th, this is your opportunity to cast your ballot. We are there the rest of the week, regular business hours, 8 to 4:30 Friday. We are there till 5:00. After that, it closes up. Ballots are secured in the location and then after that, they will be secured at city hall. Nothing out of the ordinary. It has been smooth and a lot of good comments and a lot of people have been very happy with it.
That's good. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Anticipate, we're going to use this in the April general as well as the fall. So this is your primer, this is your practice runs for.
This is our practice run.
Getting everybody for a presidential.
Yep. Since you guys did approve it, we will be using this throughout the year. So this is good through 2024. I'm hoping it'll be really beneficial for the general election with parking not interrupting things happening here at city hall.
Well, I know I visited there today. I heard Councilmember Builo also has recently visited.
It was fantastic, super smooth. Don't forget to bring your ID.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any other announcements or statements? City manager, DeRusse is yours, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't list it on the agenda, but I just wanted to give out a reminder that we're having our informational meetings this week on our ARPA non-infrastructure proposals. I had the opportunity to make a brief presentation to both the Sustainability Advisory Board as well as the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, get some input from them. I think as a result of that, I think the SAB is going to request one or two non-infrastructure items be considered. And so, and I think, and I've directed some staff to assist the SAB on those. But they're non-infrastructure, so I think they meet the criteria for council. We do have some informational sessions and I'll just read them off to you. 6:00 PM here at city hall, there'll be one informational session and then a repeat of that will be held during the day, I'm sorry, Thursday, February 15th. Thank you, Russ. I'm looking at my calendar. At 6:00 PM here at city hall. And then Friday, here at city hall at 10:00 AM, February 16th, at 10:00 AM. And then we're going to have another virtual question and answer session at 2:00 PM, right? It'll be in the Oshkosh Media Studios, but that'll be online, that people can, can email questions in and we'll answer them right then and there on the spot. In addition, some groups who may or may not be able to attend those meetings, they've approached me and I'm having meetings with them as time goes on to just answer questions that they might have specific. Most of them were applicants originally from a few years ago and either they withdrew their applications or they had staff turnover and didn't, wasn't good timing for them. So we've got a few of them coming back. Had some good discussions. But I would encourage you, if you were aware of any nonprofit groups, community-based groups that are interested, I would say encourage them to come to the meetings. And, you know, we'll, we'll work with applicants even after their application submitted to make sure that we understand everything. We want their application to be as complete as possible because when it comes to council, we want them to be able to tell their story about what they're trying to achieve. And, and I view that as a, this isn't just a, you know, you apply and you win or don't win. This is really more apply and let's have a conversation about what your needs are and how we can assist that organization with their needs. And I think in some cases, Ms. Nyforth has directed them to some other funding sources, which has worked out very well. So it's really just to make sure we establish that connection so that we can assist them not just one time, but other times in the future. So I'm looking forward to those discussions with the different groups. Happy to answer any questions if you have that. Otherwise, stay tuned for those. Those will be repeated on Oshkosh Media. I have two memos in the agenda packet, one for employee coaching and staff development that we've been doing the last couple of years. Some of the councils may recall Ben Fauske. He's done some team building with the council in the past. We do similar team building projects with different departments depending on their needs, so we're happy to have Mr. Fauske assist us with that. And then Jacob's Engineering for some wastewater treatment plant work that's getting done. Both of those exceed $25,000, which is a threshold that, at which I report those to council. And then in the agenda packet or outstanding issue updates, happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't see any. With that, we'll take the motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
There we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.